I'm sorry.
You want to get that ten?
We all said Alicia?
One more.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Gentlemen, we have minutes of our July twenty-fifth meeting. Could I have a motion to accept those?
Yeah, I'll move those.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our first order of business is our DPW truck lease acceptance.
This is just some housekeeping. Jean had brought this forward, uh, gosh, in twenty twenty-one, sometime ago when we were talking about the street lighting lease through FSB and we were doing this as well along with the cruiser leases. Uh, this is just some housekeeping. We didn't call into the minutes accepting the lease by FSB standards. So if someone could just read the motion as it is written on page two of your packets. That way we can formally, we haven't taken ownership of the truck yet. This is just-
Is the truck ready?
It is not ready. We do-
If we don't touch this money-
Right. But this is so that we can formally lock in at this low rate-
Okay.
And only if Craig gets delivery in twenty-two. If we do not see that we're gonna get delivery in twenty-two, we'll have to renegotiate a new, a new lease with a higher term. Or fingers crossed that we're gonna see this in twenty-two if not.
My last communication is that we will be receiving it before the first of the year, so.
Because as we know, rates have already gone up.
Yep.
I'm, I'll read the motion. Motion, uh, FSB loan agreement motion. Motion is to use Franklin Savings Bank for the non-appropriation clause lease up to two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars to partially finance the per, the purchase of a new Western Star forty-seven-hundred six-wheel dump truck and plow and accessory, uh, outfit. Interest rate will be two-point-six-five, tax-exempt and bank-qualified, fixed and fully amortized loan for seven years. Principal interest payments will be due annually beginning December of twenty-two. Closing cost estimated to be ninety-five dollars doc prep and three-hundred-and-fifty dollars legal review and other. Chairman Ruth Mooney is named as the authorized signer for the lease docs and other associated documents. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So again, if we don't take ownership of it this year, we won't be committed to any kind of loan and we'll be unfortunately having to go back and renegotiate a, a term and rates. But hopefully we don't have to do that because it was pretty, pretty good interest rate.
Yep. Okay, um, TOB land lease purchase request.
This is just, uh, another formality of acknowledging the request. As you probably obviously already know, that any town property has to be either sold by a closed bid or through a warrant article. This request came through the mail. It looks, it's one of those-
Well, the land beside it just was just so-
Online, um, vacant land of New England where they just kinda throw out offers to people. It's in conservation land, it's town-owned, it's not something that we would want to sell or really can sell. So again, just a formality, acknowledging the request.
I'll make an, uh, motion to deny the-
Perfect.
Request.
Thank you.
Purchase that land. I'll second it, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's interesting because we received something on a piece of land back a while ago and it was the same exact.
Yeah, and then just, I think, scroll, you know, the internet or, um-
Growing.
Yep, yep.
What did this anybody do?
Yep.
He's old.
Interesting. Uh, Primex cap agreement.
Yep, this is a, uh, contribution insurance program for Primex. This is for four-year, twenty-four to twenty-six, for the property and liability program. This is just accepting that the cap on that is at nine percent for years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So that if rates do increase, we'll be at the cap of nine percent. And I do have a formal motion in the page two of your agenda, if somebody would like to read that.
I'll make the motion to hereby accept the offer of the New Hampshire Public Risk Management Exchange Primex to enter into its property and liability contribution insurance program, CAP. At the date of the adoption of this resolution and to be contractedly bound to all of the terms and conditions of the Primex Risk Management full membership during the term of the property and liability contribution assurance program, CAP.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what do we have for any other new business?
I do not. Unless anyone else from the audience has anything on their new business that they would like to-
Um, fire department, under old business, fire department command vehicle claim.
Yes, this is just an update on the command vehicle that was damaged at a repair shop. We did get word from Primex that the coverage will be fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty minus our deposit of a thousand. Uh, they're going to try to recoup the deposit, uh, not deposit, the deductible, thank you, as well as the Irwin's bill. Uh, chief is working on getting an estimate of a new replacement and the cost of the outfit and decal. Yet to have that package for you, but I will hopefully have that for you at the August twenty-second meeting. Just wanted to update you on where we stand.
I'd like to correct your statement though. It was not, it was not, this was not damaged at a repair shop. It had an internal wiring problem, not related to the work done at an independent repair shop.
Okay.
That's why the insurance company paid the claim. Otherwise, they'd have gone against the repair shop.
They may, the insurance company may still be going after the repair shop's insurance for recouping the loss.
That's between the insurance companies, I guess.
A question was brought to me about the, um, potential use of the ambulance revenue fund. That, I found out this morning that that would require to be a warrant article and to be voted on. So it's not something we could do in the meantime or something like that, just so you guys know that ahead of time.
So we're looking at a used vehicle, I assume, because fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars isn't gonna buy a new vehicle, obviously.
No, you just spent seventy thousand and did the same thing.
I know.
So, you know.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, second deposit of ARPA funds received.
Yep, we got our second tranche of the ARPA funds that we have set aside to use for replacement of well one. Those went onto our account last week.
Yep. And when is that work gonna be, is that not replacing, repairing, isn't it?
Repairing well one, right?
No, it's gonna be a replacement.
Replacing.
Oh, it is? So it can't, we can't repair the one, oh, I thought we could repair. So is it-
The state would let us.
The state would not let us. So is that going to be, um, close enough that we don't have to do the re-permitting of a whole new well in a, I know you can dig-
They're all working on it right now under-
Yep. All right. Because the thing is, is if it, I believe if it can be dug within, um, a certain, um-
That's the state's.
I know, I don't remember what-
That's there, that's there, yes.
Oh, is it really? All right. I thought that if you dug it within a certain area of the existing one, that you wouldn't have to do a re-permitting, which is mega-
The theory, the theory why we're gonna do a new well is because, is, um, where the current well is, is, they, they call it the cone of depression or whatever.
Oh, really?
Which they're trying to get out of the area where the saturation is.
Okay. Yeah? All right.
Better.
All right. So that sounds like a whole new permitting process, which is gonna take time.
Yeah.
And money.
Oh, they're, they're, they're working on a pump test over there now, so.
Okay.
Examination lot, stuff like that.
Okay. All right.
It's moving forward.
All right, awesome. Well, I would hope the state would move forward because obviously they wanna make sure that we have clean drinking water. Okay. Um, do we have any other old business?
I do not unless someone else hear from the audience.
Ron does. I saw that, Ron.
This is what I have made.
Okay. We're ready.
I, uh, I got an invite to talk to the library customers, the library from LA.
Okay.
They wanna know about design build concepts. So give you a heads up on that. I'll get you a feeling on, you know, what I mentioned a few minutes ago about not using the existing library, like the building, no one save the money. I've thought about that and all of that. And we gotta put it. My field is, is if you try to add on to that building, it's a historical building, so you've got a net.
Oh, yeah.
Which is gonna add a ton of money, probably forty percent of the cost of the building. Whereas this, my field is if you could build a new library, you can make it out of wood with fancy outside imitation stone siding and stuff. All you need is the square footage. So you gotta find out how many square feet you're asking. And if you could put up a, you know, say, uh, something by sixty building, wood structure, two-by-six on the ceiling and inside, uh, spray foam on the walls, two inches in the center, and put a, probably in the slab, leave it as radiation heat. So it's evenly heated, put a split system and stuff. And be comfortable in there. But the problem is what's like, so you could probably get out of them. I would think of the rest of the building, if you, if you built it by yourself, you would suppose to try it. Because that's two stories, the site is split level, it's just, it's not a lot. But my, my thinking was, I mentioned is the way we wanna put it, you wanna keep it the same area again? Or because there's probably more than to put up, uh, at the park. Park it all up here? Because you've got plenty of parking, kind of a hundred people who's in the parking lot.
What, parking lot?
At the park? Sergeant Park.
Oh, Sergeant, okay. Now I get you.
Yeah.
You know, the old highway direction.
Yep.
Yep. Well, I never thought about this.
Well, it's just that, uh, I mean, if you, the other thing is, you know, you could tear this old, uh, building down. The problem is you've got a historical building there, this is a historical building. So to put a, a, a new building, library, you know, it just doesn't match with the-
Fit in?
Doesn't, doesn't fit in with the surroundings yet.
That's interesting that you said that because I've been going to Canterbury for a lot of those school meeting things that are going on. And, um, you know, they had a small little old library, you know, it's, I remember going there as a kid, little old library, and I didn't even realize that they had totally closed it and they, they built a wood structure down near, um, the parish hall at the center. Yeah, I didn't even realize that, so.
I had a kid working for me, uh, Zach Lomshaw, he's from Canterbury.
Yeah.
And his dream was to take that library and put a little pump in here.
Oh, real pump, yeah. There you go. Well, it's sitting-
Well, I think a replacement will help.
Well, it sits back in the hill, yeah, probably would be, yeah.
So, you know, I'm gonna be with these people, I'm just trying to get a feeling of, you know, for us there. And we, you know, how long have we been putting this library thing on?
Well, and, you know, I guess it boils down to, obviously, they're gonna have to have a bond and-
You know, what do they get, about three-hundred thousand or something?
I don't, I'm not sure, but- Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't remember, but you're right, it's, um, yeah.
What, what, what my thinking was, is I don't know how it'd work, I'd get donations. It might be, but I would ask for donation, we might pike and, you know, they've been all in Belmont for years. They got it at the time, and giving us two cents for it, maybe they could-
Well, you could ask the local banks, they seem to have plenty of money that they've given away, what the heck, right? They seem to do well with that.
It's one of the take a campaign to go out to, to raise the money. And I, the use of the library, how much, I know they're, they're pretty active in giving it. Other places have built big additions, they're like Wolfboro. They had a building and they built another building, but I can't imagine what that cost to do that all the time. They got a huge library.
They have the funds, lots of funds too. It's a different demographics.
But anyway, that's, so I'm gonna be with them tomorrow night and those are some of the things, and so.
So what is your thought to do with the existing building?
Make it a pub.
No, no, no.
But what?
Huh?
Town, town, you can, they, the historical society, they could all, and, but, all that historical. The building's like, people don't realize that's not a very good building.
No, it is not.
It's only twenty-four by forty-eight, it's, it's a tiny, and for them to, you know-
Make a good senior sign.
What?
Make a good senior sign.
It's a historical building, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
But that's, that's, that's my thought, actually. We get the historical society, we get, uh, we have a lot of artifacts from, from the town that, that Wolfboro tears and all that stuff, and there's no place to discuss it.
No, like, no, no, they're probably in boxes or whatever, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's my thought, and I'm, I'm gonna give you a heads up on this, what I'm, what I'm talking about. Like I said, and you, we, you wouldn't have to go out and hire a-
No, not if it's a design build, right. And, and if it's one of, you're right, if it's a building by itself.
Right, but, but you don't have to go out and get a bond, you can, you can get a, a local contractor.
Yeah.
Somebody that just, just a framed building, no different than building a-
If they agree to that. You don't know where they, you don't know where their thought is either.
Yeah, but I, I, I can't see, because we've been having it hard, how, how you add on to that building with a slate roof. It's small, and then you got all this fancy brickwork, if you look at the first course of brick that's, uh, polished, brick on it. So to fit it, to fit it in, it just, I mean, I, I look what they did in Northfield, I don't know if you've seen the library over there, it's open by, uh, the Union School. And they did a nice job putting in the addition on it. You remember what they did in Laconia, when they put the addition on the back of the Gale Library? And then, you know, they used white brick, it didn't match the building at all, and when they decided they thought that a lot. You gotta kinda keep with some historical value.
Value.
And like I said, we've got historical building here, you know, you've got one over there. So I don't, I don't, I don't think it fits in, in this area.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it doesn't fit in. All right, so that's what I got.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate the input, good luck tomorrow night.
I'll just say, I'm gonna talk to you, so, I'm just giving you a heads up.
All right. Um, do we have any-
Sharon, did you wanna bring forward this, so much, yeah, if you want to?
No.
You can update them.
So, um, with the help of Alicia, I took together a letter and sent it to Lawrence Fund Company Certified, um, asking for the return of the deposit. Um, and it, he moved apparently, and that first letter is being forwarded. And then I, we reached, did another letter Friday and took it to the post office and sent it out while they were tracking the other letter. Um, and I sent that registered, certified and registered, so you have to sign for it. And it's gonna take the same track as the last one. Alicia tried to call him while I was in her office and got his voicemail. I tried to call him after the postmaster told me that the letter was forwarded because he had a different address, they wouldn't give it to me. Um, I called him and he emailed me about five-thirty on Friday and said, "I saw that you called me a little while ago and I've not forgotten about you. I will be able to get to you before the end of this month. And one customer left before you and I'm working on them now and you will be next. I'm working with a new vendor so I can get your products quicker and I apologize for the extreme delay. I know you have board members asking where I am and I will get this done." That being said, he has two letters in forward from the Franklin Address to Barrington, New Hampshire, um, requesting the deposit back. That being said, we, I still have this fencing issue.
I guess my question is, you received an email from him.
Yes.
Um, I would email him back and ask him for his address.
I did, it's P O Box forty-one Barrington.
It is Barrington.
Yeah. Yeah, he, I said, because I didn't say anything to him other than I need a correct mailing address for you and he said forty-one, uh, P O Box forty-one Barrington. And then I just left it and forwarded the email to Alicia, to Norma, to Kyle. It's only another fifteen, twenty days or so to wait.
I, my, my thought process is to stop everything.
Okay.
Get the money back, start over, and I'm gonna recommend something, that we try something, a different method.
Okay.
And my method is, we have some very clever people that work for us. And that gentleman right over there is one of them. And if you went to him and said, "There's the cemetery commission," and said, or invite him to one of your meetings, "See, this is what we think we wanna do, would you get some pricing and can we do it ourselves?" Even if we bought the materials and took the money that it cost the materials and even charged ourselves labor, it's gonna be a whole lot less money than getting these subcontractors to do what I consider a very small job. That fence over on one-oh-seven can't be more than the five-hundred dollar job. And when you're talking about, if you sent him a check for five-thousand dollars as a deposit, what was the total that they quoted you for the whole job?
I think it was twelve or something, wasn't it, if I remember correctly?
No, for the both of them to get it.
Both, both, both jobs? Because that's what we're talking the deposit was for?
Yes. Um, the Dow Cemetery to tear down and replace the fence with a colonial black aluminum fence was nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-two-seventy-one.
What cemetery, what cemetery is that?
Dow, it's the one on the corner of Holy Road and one-oh-seven with the missing piece we can't match.
I bet I can match it in a day.
Great.
If you had to, if you had to, you could take a piece of the fence that's in the back, wash the green off it with some bleach, put it in place of that piece and put something, maybe a wooden piece, and paint it. And not spend, I mean, a tree, a tree fell out and broke the fence.
Well, we've had a gentleman break the fence. Then a year and a half before that, we had a gentleman that drove through a front section of the fence. We've already replaced three panels in that fence since I've been on the board. And then it sits uphill, so it's bent, but I'll be more than happy to ask-
But you don't, we, we have, yeah, we, we have the people. I mean, what I'm saying-
Well, you know, when we, when I was here, Craig texted me a guy that he knew that does fencing. I've called him and left messages three times, so.
But it would save you money because this is the second time in a three-year period that we're chasing money. The last one was a logger over on, uh, Blampy Road, that cemetery that we went out, he's gonna charge you thirty-five thousand to cut the trees down. And we ended, we ended up paying him around thirty-six-hundred dollars because we, we stopped the process because it was ridiculous because the bid process was not correct.
Um, it was twenty-three thousand dollars, not thirty-five thousand, and it was on Horn Road and, uh-
Yeah, okay, well, the, the point being, when we asked you to rebid that one, you went out, fell in that, fence, fell in that, landscaping, came in, they got cranes, they got the same stuff, we're at fifteen thousand, not twenty-six thousand. So, yeah, well, whatever, whatever number was, they were a lot less. And there were other people in that same ballpark. I, I have a problem with this. And then that man threw our attorneys because Jean had to get our attorney involved, charged us for coming up and talking to the neighbors and talking to the road agent and was on the phone and he submitted a bill, which we had to pay and got nothing back from. That's a fact. I can, I can have, that young lady, look it up. We paid on the advice of our attorney because he was authorized by you and your committee. Now we're out five-thousand dollars and it's been a year since you, I'm not saying did nothing wrong, I'm just saying, if we'd asked in town and asked all the proper questions of people that do this for a living, like Mr. Mitchell just gave us his opinion about the, the library.
I know, but-
I think we have the people to do this that can aid you in doing it and not cost us this aggravation.
This is true, and you and I have had this conversation before. And I wanna say one statement to you and I would like you to go on the record, okay? We've had this conversation before. Why do you pay vendors to do things that you could get people in town to do because that's what they're hired for? And Jean Bodwin has specifically told me time and time again, "You hire vendors to do it because that's what you've got a budget for." And I want that to go on record, please. That is why I have never said, "Hey." Because we, before Craig was hired, we had an interim gentleman. I called him and asked him for a truckload of loan delivered to Hadley Cemetery on Federal Street. And that was the last time I ever asked anybody that's hired by the town to do anything. I've always researched outside vendors. If that's gonna change, that's okay. If you want me to do that this way, that's okay, I'm more than happy to do it.
What I'm saying to you when you refuse to listen to this, I'm not saying you gotta not use outside vendors, but the people that we have that run the highway department, this gentleman maintains the buildings and the streets and everything downtown, are experts in doing this, so just ask their opinion. They don't physically have to do it, you can still bid it out, but there are certain things that you have to do in doing so. You gotta, you just can't pick up a phone and start going on Facebook, you gotta bid it in a paper like we did eventually when we found out this, how much that logging job was gonna be more than what we could get a taxpayer in Belmont to do it for and use a local company. There, there has to be a better plan, and there has to be. Because we, we look at this money and we're chasing five grand right now, and that's what we're doing. Your time is costing us money to send the letters, your time, your aggravation, and probably you're not real happy with me, but this has gotta stop. There's gotta be a way to correct this.
You know, I have no issue with what you're telling me. I mean, this has cost me money too because so far I've paid to mail all these letters. So, and my time and my aggravation.
I think, I think it boils down to the fact, Sharon, please, Kevin. It boils down to the fact that obvious, obviously, call Alicia before you're gonna start doing this stuff. And then if nothing else, then we can ask and get some, get some suggestions or opinions from some of the local, from some of our employees. You know, I, I think a lot of times what happens is different people have different connections with different, you know, people out there or can give you a different name than what you think, you know, whatever. A little bit, just communicate through Alicia and Patrick's available and, and if it's a, if it's a dirt thing, I guess, Craig's available, you know, that type of thing. Ask and then we'll, we'll, you're right. And, and I think it has changed from, say, maybe years ago. Years ago, there were plenty of people to call on.
Right.
Now there just isn't. We all know that things are changing because times have changed, all right? And is it gonna get any, is it gonna get done any faster? We don't know that, but, you know, just, yeah. Come, or come in to us, let Alicia know and come in and, and we'll, we'll try to ferret it out.
Okay.
All right.
So the board's advice is to ask Patrick what he thinks should be done with it and continue to pursue getting the money back from-
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I would, probably.
And I'm not telling him, he's gotta do the work, but he's more familiar with the stuff, that picks and stuff like that. So he could, he could age you, and he's here and he's very good at doing this. I mean, we threw this heat system and air conditioning system on this building all in his lap and he's got it working. I, I just think that there's a, there's gotta be a method, better method, and then when the checks are cut, yes, it's coming out of your budget and it's your money because that's what the committee, town gave you the money. But the farther you can stretch it, the better off you're gonna be and better off the town's gonna be.
Well, this wasn't, and this was not budgetary money either, this was half insurance money and half capital.
But it's still your money, money's money. A dollar's a dollar.
Well, you know the story about that anyway, because you were at that meeting when we talked about this and we just figured, whoa, we've got the insurance money, we got that, we might as well do this. Well, you know the story about that anyway, because you were at that meeting when we talked about this, and we just figured, well, we've got the insurance money, we got that, we might as well do this, he's the only one we could find to do it.
If you can do it for less, might pay more.
Well, about that.
And it is, Sharon, it's not easy to find anybody to do anything right now, but if we can use our own forces to get maybe better, cheaper, whatever, however it works. Alright?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Do we want our Old Home Day?
Do we want Old Home Day?
Final update, ready?
Do we want a final update, girl? Yeah?
Um, everything is going good so far. Programs have finally, there was a file embedded in the program, and this is probably the worst part of planning Old Home Day, was making this little book. Um, it is hours of sitting at the computer, and there's a file embedded from years ago that I can't get out of it, so I have to print it really, really weird, but I think I finally got it. Um, so they'll be going to print today. Um, the flyers, the two-sided flyers went around the town between yesterday, it's going out around this weekend. The road race, Greta has elected to run the road race, and she pretty much, she actually did kind of like one hundred percent, like, thought we were totally bowing out of it, so the volunteers and stuff that I had, she replaced some of them, and did her, but then she asked for some watering station volunteers, so we're still...
I saw that on Facebook. Um, I guess obviously, you know, I hope that, I mean, we have a lot of employees in this town, that are residents, and I would hope to think that they would be all doing their part in volunteering to, uh, put their time in for, you know, one, one little day out of the year, that they could be available and volunteer to do some things, that's for sure. I think it's, um, I mean, I guess if, well, I guess I do work for the town in a roundabout way, but, you know, I think it would be, it would be in everyone's best interest to volunteer some time to, uh...
And we have a lot of, like, we have the National Honor Society, I have my Laconia cheerleaders, we have summer camp kids and their parents that are coming to help do the cleanup and do stuff like that, so I think everything as far as, my biggest thing right now is just making sure the vendors are in the right spots, and there's enough room for the parade to go through, and stuff like that. Um, in the past, have people been able to set up on Friday night?
I think, I, I don't know, didn't they used to, they used to always set up on Friday night?
They set up the field on Friday, it's just the vendors that are asking if they can get in Friday night before roads get closed.
Vendors that are gonna be right down in here.
Yeah.
After the close of business at the town hall.
Alright.
Yeah.
And you might check that with the library, see what they're doing on Friday night.
Always having a night on Friday nights.
Okay.
So you may also need to notify everyone who parks there, who lives on Main Street, that they can't park there.
That's where, I gotta find the person in the bus.
I have that, so...
Okay, that's, yeah, it's the bus, the bus needs to go for the weekends.
Bus needs to go entirely.
Yeah.
Why is the bus parked there, I guess?
She lives on North Main, she lives on Main Street.
Okay.
Um, she was doing summer camp, uh, not summer camp, uh, some, summer school.
Yep.
She has assured me that one of the buses will be gone. And we are talking about it. But she definitely needs to be gone for Old Home Day.
Yeah.
And this winter is going to be a nightmare.
Of course, because you can't plow with the bus there.
And it's not like it's her vehicle, it's not a resident vehicle, it's a
Yeah.
Company, commercial vehicle, and it, it doesn't belong there.
I probably would notify the company.
Well, when it gets towed.
Oh, no. Yeah, but still, I would, I would notify, I...
Yeah, summer school's there.
Yeah, it was, and it was supposed to be moved a week or two ago, so.
Yeah, so, so we need that bus out of there, and other than that, then I think everything's pretty good to go.
Do we know how many runners we have? Did it...
Um, so she says that there's thirty-two people that Jeff Roberts has that's coming, well, okay, so Jeff Roberts...
Said there was thirty-two people, right? I talked to him last night, he said that they have to file the paperwork with the tracking field association, and they're not allowed to file that until today. He said he has applications for thirty-two runners, he said five of them are coming from the state of Tennessee alone.
That's, yeah, there's a lot of traveling runners. And then, Greta says fifty-five.
Alright.
So, we'll see. Um, I did get all their trophies and awards, I got like a crystal one for the one trophy that we're doing for the parade, that, like, a fifth of the cost of the granite. Um, so, everything's pretty much rolling all together.
Awesome, good girl. God, I don't know how you did it. We appreciate it. Uh, yeah, a lot of, a lot of lost sleep, I, I can understand that. Um, do we have any other old business?
Any update on the moving into the Velvo building yet from BTS?
Nope, no, no.
The turnip group was here last week for approximately four hours, I went through the first three floors.
Good.
Taking measurements, checking things out, that was cool.
Yeah, yeah, it's hurry up and wait. Unfortunately. Nothing else?
I do not have any.
And no non-public?
No.
Alright, awesome. Then this meeting's adjourned, we'll see you...
Oh, yes, I do, I'm sorry.
You do?
One, yes, one non-public.
Alright, um, then our next meeting is August twenty-second?
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-two. And, um, we're gonna go into non-public, ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter...
C.
C. Alright, thank you, everyone. It's your Primax.